Let's call this regular monthly meeting of the St. Bernard Parish School Board to order. We'll start with prayer. Superintendent Bocey?
Dear Heavenly Father, we are grateful for the smooth opening of school and for the many great things that continue to happen in our school district. We pray that you continue to bless us with the support of our parents and this community as we work hard to make this a great year for teaching and learning. Be with our community this week as we pause to remember our plight nine years ago, and thank you, Father, for guiding our resurgence and redevelopment into a safe, family-oriented community once again. These things we ask in your name.
Mr. Long?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Superintendent Bocey, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Acevedo?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mrs. DeFatta?
Here.
Mr. Egan?
Here.
Mr. England?
Here.
Mrs. Daisart?
Here.
Dr. Craft?
Here.
Dr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Nikosia?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
We recognize at this time for personal reasons, Ms. Daisart, you have the announcements.
Thank you, Dr. Craft. At this time, on behalf of the whole board and Superintendent Bocey, we'd like to wish two of our board members a happy birthday. Dr. Henderson Lewis had a birthday on August 6th. Happy birthday. And Mr. Joe Long had a birthday on August 11th. Happy birthday, Joe. And also, we want to wish Mr. Nikosia and his lovely bride a happy 49th anniversary. Happy anniversary. Good celebration this year.
Mr. Egan, I believe you have something to share with us?
Yes, I'd like to, for the privilege to welcome, I mean, to give accolades to one of ours, Mr. Barry Lemoyne, who has been chosen Man of the Year. Barry?
Barry is the one behind the camera and with the other guys helping him a little bit. And the lady of the year, or the woman of the year, is Nora Egan. So, I don't want to say too much because if I go home, she may get mad at me.
But nevertheless, to both of them, congratulations, and it's something well, well, as far as the two that were chosen, even though one of them happens to be my wife. Thank you.
And chosen by BPW as the...
Yes, that's right. It's BPW. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Daisart.
Congratulations, Superintendent.
Thank you.
And Mr. Egan for sharing that with us at this time. Shelby, do we have any community concerns from the audience? No? Okay. So we'll move the agenda to item five, a motion to incorporate the report of the general committee meeting into the minutes of the August regular monthly meeting. Do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Nikosia, second by Mr. Long. Any questions, any comments before we call for the vote? If not, vote your machines.
Dr. Craft? Motion passes 11-0.
Going to item six, we have three categories there. First, minutes of the regular monthly meeting of April the 15th, 2014, as published on August the 8th, 2014. Do we have a motion? Mr. Campbell?
Second.
Second by Ms. Daisart. Any question or comments before we call for the vote? Hear none. Vote your machines.
Motion passes 11-0.
Minutes of the special meeting of May the 13th, 2014, as published on August the 15th, 2014. Motion by Mr. Cliff England. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Dr. Henderson Lewis? Any questions or comments at this point? Hear none. Vote your machines.
Motion passes 11-0.
The third on item six, minutes of the regular monthly meeting of May the 27th, 2014, as published on August the 15th, 2014.
So move.
Moved by Dr. Lewis, second by Mr. Nikosia. Any question or comments? Hear none. Vote your machines.
Motion passes 11-0.
Okay, you have item seven in your agenda. We'll call Mr. Granberry, fourth, if you have any questions. That would be item seven in your folder. How's things going in the Personnel Department, Mr. Granberry?
Nice and busy.
Nice and busy. Well, that's good.
Makes the days pass fast.
Yeah, absolutely. Any questions from Mr. Granberry at this point? Okay, we thank you, Mr. Granberry. We will receive your report, and thank you much. Item eight on the agenda, motion to approve the pupil progression plan for 2014-2015, and there was a recommendation by the committee. Okay, we have a motion, second by Mr. Campbell. Any questions? You have any comments, Ms. Bocey, about this? That's fairly routine from what we found at the general committee meeting.
Same.
So let's vote your machines at this time.
Motion passes 11-0.
Okay, item nine is new and it did not go before the committee, so any questions on this? It's a policy for Act 853, and it's important that we have a policy relative to this, so we look in your folder at item nine.
What we have is, as we spoke about at the committee meeting in the last legislative session, Act 853 was passed dealing with public school choice in Louisiana. And it had some parallels to the federal NCLB, but it was very different in what the mandates were at the state level as opposed to the federal level. And as a consequence of the act, it directed each school board to adopt a policy addressing the tenants of the act. So what you have before you is the proposed federal policy, or the proposed policy that deals with first the federal section and then the state section, and this would be in the policy manual filed JBCE. In consultation with the LSBA as well as Forethought Consulting, we developed this particular policy, which is pretty generic. If you look at the first part, it deals with the federal requirements, and that really only deals with failing schools under NCLB, which would be F schools, and none of our regular schools are that. You know, we have an alternative school, but alternative schools are a little bit different than the regular schools. So were we ever to have an F school, heaven forbid, which we do not in any of our regular schools, it would fall under the first section of the policy, which is federal requirements for school choice. That would mean parents of students in any of those F schools would then have the right to request placement in an academically acceptable school. So what it does is say that they do have that right, it mimics the federal law, and that the superintendent and the staff will be responsible for developing and managing that choice plan if that were to develop. So as I say, we have no one in that situation. The second part of this is the, really, the changes that have to be made in accordance with Act 853 of the 2014 legislative session that deals with school choice for parents who are sending, whose children have attended D or F public schools, and gives them a greater degree of choice to attend an A, B, or C school within their district or possibly surrounding districts. And what you see in the policy really just mimics the law itself. The child would have to have been enrolled in a D or F school the prior year or have lived in that attendance zone of a D or F school. And then if there is sufficient capacity at an A, B, or C school, he would have the right to apply for admittance to that particular school. We are defining capacity, as many of the school districts are who are looking at this, as 80% of a particular grade level, because what we would have to do, we're in the fortunate situation that we do not have any D or F regular schools. So there would be no one within our school district who would exercise this to move to another school within our school district. This would only affect children who possibly would live outside of the parish. So in that regard, we are recommending that we define capacity in our schools as 80%, because with the continued growth of our parish, we feel that we need to have a cushion for students who would move in and physically live within that school district. And I can say at this point, then really, we would have no capacity, because the way that we staff, you know, we staff at the elementary level to try to achieve a 20-to-1 ratio, and we are over, you know, we're over that. But not enough, say, to form a new section. So we would not have really capacity at our grade levels at this time. So in the particular policy, we're defining capacity as at 80%. We're saying that the parents would have to be responsible for the transportation of their children. We're saying in that next paragraph that the board would authorize the superintendent to develop the rule, or the regulations and the procedures to implement that, and that those procedures would include entering into inter-district agreements with other city or parish or school boards that the student is coming from, that there would be an exchange of dollars to meet the local allocation that we spend on each and every child. We're also saying in the policy that that choice option would be good for that one year, and then when the new assessments come out, then it would always be reevaluated, and we would look at capacity again at each grade level in each district, in each school. It's companion piece, or the actual rules and regulations for the implementation. So if someone would wish to apply, the general section tells them that they had to have attended the D or F school the prior year or have been in that attendance zone. The duration of the enrollment, it says it doesn't obligate for more than one year, so we're only talking about year by year. We've identified a single point of contact, so if anyone would be interested in that option and come to us, that they would have to come to the school board office and go through our Office of Child Welfare and Attendance. So it wouldn't be at each and every school. We have a single point of contact for every child who would be interested in this. And then we have a whole section on the verification of initial eligibility, which would mean when that parent would come, that there would be an application package that he would have to completely fill out with all of the data. There would have to be proof of attendance in that D or F school the prior year, or, and/or, a picture identification of the parent or legal guardian verifying residency in that attendance zone would also have to be provided. And then we go on with a very detailed, they'd have to provide at that point all of the academic records, including the most recent report card, statement of promotion to the next grade or retention, transcript of the academic performance, any special education records applicable, 504 accommodations and verifications, test scores, and any other records that we would need for accurate academic or grade placement. They'd have to provide the discipline records from the school where the child was, including all records of suspension, expulsion, or placement in an alternative setting. And immediately, if there was placement in an alternative school, that child would not be eligible to attend our schools. And they would also be ineligible to transfer to our schools if the discipline records showed that he was expelled for any reason in the preceding year, suspended more than once in the preceding year, had more than one fight, or any other act of violence in the preceding year, or was found to be in possession of any illicit drugs, narcotics, weapons on school grounds, or the school bus stop in the preceding school year. So we would look at all of the discipline records and disqualify any student from attendance based on that discipline record. The attendance record, if there were more than 10 unexcused absences, that would be then ineligible to exercise rights under this act. Would have to have a copy of the birth certificate, the proof of domiciliary custody of any minor child, completed immunization records indicating compliance with state laws, social security cards, and, this is important as well, the written consent of the student's previous school system to both of the following. That they would make payment to the St. Bernard Parish School Board in amount equal to the school board's local per pupil amount recognized in the MFP for the school year in which the student seeks to enroll, in proportion to the portion of the school year during which the student is enrolled in the system, and the appropriate local share of capital expenditures. And also to provide any and all records and information required by the school board to determine student's eligibility or ineligibility to enroll. So they would need to bring that with them from the sending school district. Then we would go through the verification of capacity that we talked about before, looking at the program capacity as well as school capacity, if, for example, they were in the gifted and talented program, or in special education, or in honors classes, or any, to make sure that we have the capacity for them in each of those areas that they would be enrolled in. We would keep that 80% capacity definition, and we say at no point would we hire additional teachers or staff or secure portable classroom space to provide any capacity at all. So if that were the case, we would notify the parent that we do not have sufficient capacity at that point, and that would be an annual determination. Then the next section deals with excess applications. If we had more applications, if we had some space available, but we had more applications than we had space, we would, anyone who had been granted admittance the prior year would have first choice. Otherwise, it would be at random selection, or any spots that would be available. Athletic eligibility, we're saying that if the parents and the guardians are responsible for contacting LHSAA to determine eligibility for student participation in various sports, because there are rules and regulations that govern that, and we would expect the parents to investigate that, to ensure that their children did have eligibility if they indeed wished to participate in those varsity sports. The transportation would be the responsibility of the parents, obviously, because we wouldn't provide transportation outside of the parish. And then at any time during the school year, any of these discipline infractions occurred, then the student would no longer be eligible to attend the schools. So these would be the rules and regulations that we would promulgate to govern any potential applicant under Act 853. So at this point, you know, if you'd like to ask any questions concerning this, and then we would ask that possibly, that you'd offer a motion to Dr. Paul.
Any questions, Mr. Long?
Ms. Bocey, how much do we spend on our students? Do you know, you have an estimate?
You know, I had that, but I didn't bring that with me, Mr. Fernandez. It's about, I want to say, the MFP per pupil is 39.61, but it's higher than that with the weighted average is, a local portion is a little over, between $4,000 or $5,000 a year. So what we would be asking, for example, for student, if we had sufficient capacity and a student would come in from another school district, the MFP money would come to us through that formula, so the state would send the money. What we would say to that child is, your sending district would have to send our local per share. So if we are spending $5,000 of local funds on that particular child, then the sending school district would have to send us the $5,000. And under, there's an old law in the statutes, RS 17105, which is quoted down here, which had governed those inter-district transfers for years and years and years, because many school systems throughout the state, you know, prior to this law, had arrangements with neighboring school districts. Sometimes parishes, you know, the geography of our state, sometimes parishes were separated by rivers or lakes, or railroad tracks, or whatever barrier, and actually lived closer to schools in a neighboring community, a neighboring parish, than to one in their own parish. So sometimes school districts would make agreements and say, well, okay, these children who lived in that little fringe area could go to the other parish school, but you would have to send along the local funds for them. We'll be happy to take them into our school, but you would have to provide those local monies. And via statute 17105, for years governed that. And there were memorandum of understanding, memorandum of understanding that parishes had already had for years. So what we're doing in developing our policy is saying, okay, there's Act 853, which is silent on that, but there's also 17105 that says we can enter into those inter-district agreements. So we are taking the stance that if we were at some point to have capacity in any area to accommodate any of these students, that the sending district would then have to send that share of local funding so that the students who were in our parish and in our school system would not suffer and have their parents' tax monies diluted for other students.
So what you're saying is the money we receive from the MFP covers most of what it costs to educate a child in our system?
It covers just the state cost.
Okay.
And then the local monies that we raise, because remember how complicated the MFP is, they look at the relative wealth of school districts, and there is a certain amount of money per pupil that is allotted statewide for every child in the MFP, but depending upon the wealth of your particular community, sometimes the state allotment is higher and your local allotment is lower if you're a poorer parish. If you're a richer school district, supposedly, according to the formula, they give you less state money per child and greater local money, or you're expected to raise greater local monies per pupil. So when you look at the state per pupil and the local per pupil for a child in differing districts, they're different. The total amount may come to be about the same, but the split is different. So our local share might be, say, $5,000 that we might raise. Well, a neighboring parish might raise only $4,000 per student, or $3,000, or $6,000. It could be, it depends. So what we're saying is to educate a child in this parish, in this school system, we get this much per pupil in the state money, which we would get through the MFP, and our taxpayers pay this much per student. So if you're coming in under this particular act, and if we have capacity to satisfy it, then we expect your sending school system to send us that amount that we spend locally on each one of our children.
Money is definitely going to be an issue.
Yes.
And also, we have to give first priority to St. Bernard students.
Absolutely.
And we don't want to crowd our schools. I'm glad to see you got the 80% in there. That's going to make a difference. And the only other question I had, under the ineligibility during the school year, in other words, you went through the code of conduct, and this is the main ones that we're going to be concerned about?
We're looking at it holistically, correct. If a student is suspended once, well, okay, I mean, that can happen.
Right.
But if there's more than one suspension, then that child will no longer be eligible, is what we're saying.
But these students coming in will have to follow our code of conduct?
Oh, absolutely.
Definitely.
Absolutely.
And I'm sure they'll be provided that when they...
And I do have to say right now, I mean, we're obligated to adopt this policy. We have not had anyone come in under this this year. So, I mean, it's not this burning issue at this point, it's just that everyone has to adopt a particular policy. So we're dealing with what may happen in the future.
Right.
But we want to have everything in place so that when people would come in, it's right here, handed to them, and it's outlined in as much detail as we've been able to put together.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Ms. Vanna?
Thank you, Dr. Craft. Just to clarify something on Mr. Long's question, and then a different question. When we would, or if we would have a student that came in, and then they would have to send the, our matching local funds, as you said, some districts, maybe they raised $4,000, $6,000, ours is $5,000, they would have to match the $5,000, correct?
That's what we're saying, correct.
Okay. So even if their district raised $4,000, they would have to match the $5,000?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. The next question I had is, on file JBCE, in regards to where the federal regulations say that you shall enter into an inter-district agreement with other city, parish, or local school boards to provide for the admissions of students, are these prearranged agreements that we need to enter into and sign prior to getting students to let them know they can come here, or is this going to be done on a when and if we would get a student from another district to apply?
When and if, because right now, we have none in place, and we have no intention of implementing any.
Okay, so it's a when and if.
It's a when and if.
Then that follows up to item H, the written consent from the student's previous school system, that if we do then take in a student from their district, that at that time, we have signed that agreement, plus then they would sign off as requiring to send the funds that would be outlined in A and B of this part, to cover the education of the student.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Want to know? Thank you.
Mr. Warner?
I'd just, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the policy for Act 853.
We got a motion to have a second. Okay, we still have discussion on the floor. Ms. Daisart, you're next.
Thank you, Dr. Craft. Ms. Bocey, this Act 853 is a result of the 2014 legislature, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we're mandated to adopt the policy?
We're mandated to adopt, yes, ma'am.
It's not our wishes or option to do so?
That's correct.
Okay. As far as the 80% capacity, the numbers in our schools, I know that our schools continue to grow, which is a great thing. Do you, and I know tomorrow, the preschool students start, do you...
Half of them started today.
Yeah, they have tomorrow.
Well, they have tomorrow.
Right. But, and I know we were, over 7,000 a couple of weeks ago, do you have the updated numbers?
We're anticipating, and we can verify them tomorrow, that we'll be over 7,500, we're hoping, or we think that's where we're headed.
So that's a record.
So we are, yeah, oh, yeah.
That's a record since...
It's a record since the summer.
Since this coming.
Correct. So we're slowly, you know, we're getting to those numbers. And as I think you had brought up, Ms. Daisart, in a previous meeting, and many of you, when we're looking at our elementary schools, we're bursting at the seams.
We are.
And we're trying to keep the ratios as close to 20, 22-to-1 as we can. And it's difficult as children continue to move into the parish to keep those ratios intact. And then we have space issues as well, because in order to provide, you know, you can sit there and count classrooms, but we pride ourselves in providing an all, a well-rounded, all-encompassing curriculum. So we do have music rooms and art rooms and physical education classes, you know, where we section off rooms for, as well as computer labs and intervention rooms. So there's a lot that goes on in each and every school that we have to have to... So there's a lot that goes on in each and every school that we have to have to run for. We don't want that to be happening out in hallways.
Well, we sure don't want this, this policy to impact our students in St. Bernard Parish. And, um, so the eighty percent, you know, is a, a, a good, I think, number to, um, capacity. I think we probably are out, exceeding that, and with, you know, as the year goes on, we usually get additional students also.
Every day.
Yes. So, um, I just would hope that this, this policy that was mandated does not, in the, in the future, um, uh, impact our students. In the event that, and I know in this policy that we developed, in the event that, um, okay, the MFP's gonna follow the student, and that would be coming from the state, the state funds. However, the local funds, in the event that the other parishes, who may be having a child come here, if they, uh, decide they're not gonna send those local funds, you know, is there a mechanism where we can mandate that?
Well, at this point, then, it's my intention not to accept the child.
Okay.
Because, uh, the way that I read Act eight fifty-three is that we are mandated to adopt a policy to facilitate and work with other school districts to facilitate the transfer of those students. So that, that's a two-way street. If children would move into our parish, the sending parish, we would have to enter into an agreement. If they are not in agreement, then to me, then that violates the tenants of Act eight fifty-three, and then I wouldn't be able to accept the child.
Okay. And then one last thing, um, I didn't see a date as far as the, uh, before, to enroll a child. They would have to do it prior to the beginning of the, of the school year, uh, to, to make sure that we had some capacity for them, depending on numbers, et cetera?
Well, the law is silent on that. In fact, there is some discussion as to, because the law specifically says, uh, that these letter grades are for the most recent school year. And to be perfectly honest, the letter grades for the most recent school year will not even be out until October. So, I'm not really sure. Some people say the implementation should be based on the prior year's school grade. However, the Act says the most recent year.
You gotta go by the Act.
So there is some question, then, as to what year you should use. Now, you know, that again is a double-edged sword. So when the scores come out in October, then that could spur, at that point, potentially, people wishing to transfer, or to use it on those most recent grades that come from the thirteen, fourteen school year. But, you know, we've done our calculations, we won't have any of our local schools in the D R F category. So none of our students in St. Bernard would even, uh, fall into any of these categories to exercise any rights to go with, to other schools within our own district, or even to look elsewhere. I have no knowledge, then, of what would happen with surrounding districts.
Well, in order to keep our, um, pupil teacher ratio at what we prod ourselves in, you know, for the progress of our students, um, I would just be concerned during the year, you know, having, you know, additional students coming in continuous, continuously, if that would happen, you know? So, um, is there any way we can put a date into the policy, that it would, has to be done prior to, uh, you know, the beginning of the school year? That way, when Mr. Granberry staffs, uh, teachers, we said we're not gonna add teachers, when Mr. Granberry, um, staffs the teachers according to the pupil teacher ratio, um, you know, is there any way we can add a date?
Well, I, I guess we could, and say at the beginning of the year, or possibly at the semester. Um, I would be somewhat maybe hesitant to do that, to some extent, because if, uh, we're operating during the course of the school year, and right now, and I don't think we're going to exceed, you know, this eighty percent capacity, I, I really don't wanna have to look at the capacity issue again in January, you know, or at a, at a mid-level. Because right now, at this point, um, the way that we are staffing, um, we certainly, you know, if we have that twenty percent cushion, that's good. I don't want to relook at it again, possibly, and as the year progresses.
Good point. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. England?
Boce, um, what if a school was at, was D or F, but what if they reassessed and come back to be a C? What happens to the student then?
Uh, you know, it's, sometimes when legislators write laws, and then, or anything, then, then you actually have to have the implementation. And we know the old saying, the devil's in the details.
Absolutely.
Well, it only applies to that letter grade in the most recent school year, and we are taking it as the enrollment is only good for a year. So if, if these things go up and down, and up and down, one year a child's eligible, the next year a child may not be eligible. That's the way the law's written. So if they're eligible one year, fine, if they're not eligible the next year, they're not eligible.
So that, so the student would have to go back to that, to their school district?
That's the way I would interpret that, per se. Now, then we could get into these fine little points of argument, what's a school he attended last year? It might be our school, which wasn't a D R F, so maybe he wouldn't, you know, maybe. But then you've got, or otherwise would have attended, living in that attendance zone, which would counteract that. So, you know, you know, you know, all these attorneys, you know, who are sitting here like this. They can argue either side of the case, so I think we have to look at that on an individual, case by case, as we would come across.
It's just food for thought.
Oh, Ms. England, huh?
Is he the only attorney up here?
[laughing].
Is that all, Ms. England? Okay. Thank you, thank you. Ms. Boce, in other words, really by eight, Act eight fifty-three, we are mandated to have a policy. And it's in our best interest to have a policy that will protect our schools from being overcrowded, and we must leave that cushion for the capacity for growth within the parish, and not from people coming in outside the parish. I know some of the legislators might have had good intentions, but it could open Pandora's box, and we, we want to maintain control for the best interests of our students. So at this point, we'll, we have a, a motion and a second on the floor. I'll ask one more time, does anyone have anything to say before we call for the vote? Should we call a roll call vote, or just, uh, vote the machines? Okay, vote the machines.
Motion passes eleven zero.
Okay, thank you. Then we move the agenda. Item ten, motion to approve revisions to the twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen general fund budget. Mr. Fernandez. He's here, ready to, uh, answer any questions. He covered this thoroughly, uh, and we did have a recommendation from, for the committee as a whole. We have a motion by Dr. Lewis, second by Mr. Long. Uh, hearing no questions, I'll, Mr. Fernandez, we'll ask you to vote your machines.
Motion passes eleven zero.
Okay. Item eleven, a motion to approve the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire that we received and was filled out, and there was a recommendation by the committee. We have a motion by Mr. Fattis, second by Mr. Campbell. Uh, seeing no hands up, vote your machines.
Motion passes eleven zero.
Item twelve, a request to issue bids, requests for proposals for equipment, videos, materials, and supplies for the MoMA Center, uh, and that's new, there was no recommendation by the committee.
We have Mrs. Assaveta with us tonight, who is our director of the MoMA Center, and she's going to explain to you a little bit about why she's here this evening.
Welcome, Ms. Assaveta.
Hi, thank you. I'm here tonight to ask for permission to send out bids for videos, equipment, and materials for the MoMA Center. The videos have to be of a certain quality because of the dome that we have in, it's a forty-six-foot dome that we have in the planetarium, and, um, it has to meet certain requirements, so you, I just can't go to anyone to buy the videos. We would have a committee that would meet, once the videos started to come in for us to review, a committee of teachers to meet, to review the videos.
And, and along with this, as, as you know, um, Ms. Assaveta went to the training for the planetarium from the Spitz people that are in, um, Pennsylvania, in Philadelphia, right?
It was, um, very intense, but I'm so excited. Our school, our children are so fortunate to be able to experience this, because the things that we'll be able to do in this planetarium. I have a short clip, it's about four minutes long, that the people at Spitz put together at my request, so that I could show you a little bit of what can, um, what can happen. And I'm gonna talk a little bit through it, 'cause there's some things I just wanna point out to you.
And because of the bid laws of the state of Louisiana, as we look for programs to put into the planetarium, um, we're not, uh, at liberty to just say, well, I wanna go buy that, and I wanna go buy that, and I wanna go buy that, because it's going to exceed the, uh, particular values for the bid law. And just as we do with some of the bids that Mr. Harleton will bring us, and we bid on these catalogs and such, the, there are just a few companies that produce these shows that meet the quality, the pixel levels, or whatever you were talking about.
Resolution, right.
Resolution of what we can put in the planetarium itself. So we need to go out for an R F P for that, have them send some of the materials, we will review them, and then come back and make recommendations, so then we can buy out of this particular company's catalog, or this particular company's catalog.
Very exciting. Starry Night is the solar system portion of the software that comes with the system, and everything that you see there, I'll be able to do. This is a horizon. I'll be able to put in a horizon, if Gojai's coming to us, I can set up the horizon to look like Gojai's campus. Latest technology, latest advances in astronomy. Three D, the kids can wear three D glasses for some portions of this, to see things in three D, especially when we get to the earth. We can take the kids on a journey that Apollo thirteen took. I can program it, and it'll take them on that journey. They'll fly along with the astronauts. The planets are shown in their real colors. This is what the dome would actually look like. He's holding a little control that allows, um, the presenter to walk around the dome and control everything that's going on in that dome by that little control. So they, I can be doing a live show, talking to the students, and walk around and control everything with that one little remote. This is another feature, this is the geology portion. I can ask it to go to St. Bernard, Louisiana, it will zoom in, good way to show coastal erosion, 'cause we can zoom in and see exactly what the marshes and swamp look like in the area. Um, it can be done in three D, so they can see a three D view of it. Volcanoes, wonderful examples of volcanoes in three D. Kinda gives the kids the example, the ability to go places they can't go. We can go to those volcanoes, we can go to those mountains they've never experienced. This, um, shows earthquakes. Shows that earthquakes do happen underwater. And because we're connected into, right into the internet, if an earthquake is happening at the time, it shows us that earthquake hap, happening, tells us what time it happened, where it happened, and the magnitude of the earthquake. This is a zoom in of Philadelphia, because, um, Spitz is located in Philadelphia. Can show water temperatures, um, can, there is a portion that has Katrina, and it actually shows the path of Katrina, as Katrina moved this way. And it's, it goes from kindergarten, I, it can be programmed for lower levels, all the way up to college levels. The programmer's the one who decides the intensity, or the, um, the level of knowledge that needs to be learned.
Anyone have any questions? From Ms. Assaveta? Uh, Ms. Darcy?
Thank you, Ms. Assaveta. Um, I thought you was calling on Ms. Assaveta, the other Ms. Assaveta. By the way, congratulations again on your new position.
Thank you.
You know you're gonna do a terrific job.
Thank you.
Congratulations. That is very exciting. When you said exciting, that, I mean, it just, you know, to keep learning, uh, so much fun, and just, it's so much more than what we had before with the planetarium, but to learn the geography and so many other things. I mean, you would, you, you know, years ago, when, when the students went to the planetarium, they might have gone, once a year, well, they can learn so much more than just once a year with the, you know, with the stars and the moon and the earth, but the geography part of it, and so many other aspects.
And it's not, it won't be the same program every year. As they grow in the curriculum, the programs change with them. So I can program it for, from, you know, a freshman in high school to see it, and then a senior in high school, and it's all gonna be different, because we control what they see, so it's always gonna be changing.
And talk a little bit how you're working with the teachers, 'cause you're incorporating a lot of this in the science standards, the next-generation standards, the ones that we're currently teaching. So it's not gonna be like a little extra, or it'll be in the curriculum.
In fact, today, I just finished, um, I took, I asked all the science curriculum writers to send me the third and fourth nine-weeks curriculum, so that I could see, 'cause, you know, maybe that's a projection of when we'll be able to get in. So I looked at the third and fourth nine-weeks science curriculum, and saw exactly what was gonna be taught. And it happens that it's the solar system. So they sent me their G L Es, and I took all of their G L Es, and mapped them out, and correlated them to the next-generation science standards. So everything's correlated, I, and it's, it's just amazing how it falls in, because the little ones need to learn about the rotation of the earth, but so do the middle school and the high school. So it's all gonna build on each other. Um, the teachers are excited, because the kids will get to actually see. And I mean, it's real planets they're gonna look at. We can zoom in at the mo, moon, and they can see the craters. We can take, uh, one of the G L Es is for the students to know the planets in their order. Well, they can fly from Gojai to each planet. Find the distance from each planet, how big the planet is, how hot it is, what elements make up that planet. It's, it's amazing. I just, you have to see it. You have to see it.
We'll have to have field trips there ourselves.
Yes, yes, you will be there.
Yes, you will.
Thank you, Ms. Assaveta. Is there a motion on the floor at this time to, um, to call for bid?
No.
Or to approve?
No.
Okay. Um, okay, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, give, uh, have a request for proposals for equipment, videos, materials, and supplies for the MoMA Center.
Second by Mr. DeCoshin. Ms. Darcy made the motion. Um, are there other questions? I know it'd be good for, okay.
Thank you, Dr. Craft. Again, congratulations, Ms. Assaveta. I think you might have one of the best jobs in the system right now.
Most exciting, haven't you?
I'm telling you. Um, I am so happy to see this, and, um, I actually walked past today, 'cause it's, it's in my backyard, so I'm really excited about this, and it's gonna be finished very, very soon, keep our fingers crossed. Um, I'm also looking at the different types of software you're gonna get. It's not just limited to science.
No, it's not just limited to science.
It's gonna be biology, technology, architecture, cultural arts, history, English literature.
It's very broad.
So this will be?
There are, like, when they teach the mythology unit, there's, or videos out there on mythology that can be brought into the dome.
And I love the fact that our students will be able to go there multiple trips, and as you incorporate into the curriculum being taught, it's gonna make it much more interesting, especially for those visual learners, that may be... interesting, especially for those visual learners that may be, you know, in the classroom with all of that. This will be something new and different. I'm glad to see histories in there, because I'm like, I'm the social studies kind of person, and all the kids tell me, I love science. Well, what about social studies? Oh, that's boring. So hopefully, we'll change some of their minds with this, and they'll think that it's just as neat and cool as science.
And the videos will also tie into the exhibits. When we plan the exhibits, we can tie them into, with the videos.
Yes.
So that they'll have, it's going to be history, there's going to be a lot of history in there. The way that the standards are written for every video or show that's produced in the planetarium, or in every exhibit, there will be a lesson plan to go along with that for every grade level. And it has Common Core incorporated, the ELA, and the math are incorporated in it too. So it's not just hitting science, it's hitting all four core curriculum.
I think this is, this puts our system leaps and bounds above the surrounding systems.
Yes, I agree.
And it's a wonderful, wonderful thing, and I'm, I'm glad we were able to bring this to our students. And thank you for the wonderful job you're doing.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. DePattis. Any other questions from board members? Ms. Boce, I believe you have something you need to say.
And, and for those who, and we get to the mundane part, but those who are interested in cost, as, as how we're buying all these, because it's very expensive, videos and equipment that we're putting in, as we sat down, as we talked about around this horseshoe many times, when we planned the master plan to develop the school system or to rebuild the school system, and we decided to do the MoMA Center with the science exhibits and the planetarium, through FEMA, we had a very large contents PW project worksheet. And as we looked at all of our schools in the Katrina catastrophe, a disaster, and went in there and painstakingly did inventory, came up with all lost materials and contents, and they were school by school. Well, when we sat down to plan this, we put a pot of money aside to say when we open this, we know that we're going to need these programs and these materials and such. So we have set aside those monies, those FEMA funds and our contents PW, to initially set this planetarium and science museum up the way it needs to be set up. And as years go by, then, what we're hoping, obviously, that as we open these shows and such to the public and to other school systems in the community, maybe charge a little bit for other people, not our students going through, but from others as well, that this will then begin to support itself as we have to replenish some of the, you know, some of the shows and the exhibits that we use. So as far as the seed money, when, and you may or may not remember this, but you were part of this, when we set this thing up, to say, in that contents PW, knowing that we were going to do this, we set aside a pot of money to pay to fund this initially. So kudos to everybody sitting around this table, you know, for that forethought.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Boce. It certainly is an asset to the Bears, and I know not only groups will be able to take advantage of this, but the parents' association of each school. I think this is a key thing, to educate them about the utilization of the planetarium, because it is something that's very, very good for our parish. And we're fortunate that we were able to get the funds without taxpayers' increases to do this, and I think that's very worthy, and speaks well for our administration and our school board as we move forward further into the 21st century. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Anyone has anything to say before we move forward? Okay, vote your machines.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you, Ms. Acevedo. I know you will do well. Thank you so much. Items to be placed on the agenda for our next committee meeting, Ms. Benazak will take these, just call her and send it to her, and she will put it on for the next time. We have superintendent's recommendations at this time.
Uh, nothing. I think we've covered everything. We've had an extremely smooth opening of the school year. We'd like to thank all of our teachers and administrators and parents, and especially our students, because things are going extremely well. And we'll be very happy to welcome our last little group of pre-K, four-year-olds, tomorrow, and then our little school community will be complete.
Don't forget Friday.
And Friday, how could I forget that? Our Day of Reflection breakfast, the ninth anniversary, and I think it'll be just a wonderful morning of fellowship for the community. And I don't want to wish our lives away, and then we'll begin planning for the big 10th anniversary next year. But we will thoroughly enjoy the year as we go through in preparation and planning.
Yes.
Shelby, in the Academy Gym?
Same place, Academy Gym, ninth-grade Academy Gym. Tickets are on sale for the community. It's $10 a ticket. They're going very, very fast. In fact, I haven't checked with Ms. Benazak lately, but I think we still have a few seats, but tables are flying, so. Anyone's interested, please contact Shelby Benazak at the central office here, and she will be happy to accommodate you.
That's a slight increase, right, in the GoChase, the cost?
I believe it was 10 last time.
Now it was 10 last year. Now it was 10.
And they get a good price.
It was 5 when we started. We changed, and we raised it to 10 a couple of years ago. Trying to cover the cost, just the cost of the food. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, everything's escalated.
Talk to Ms. Bloom.
That's right. She'll tell you. Anything else before we adjourn? Mr. Campbell? We've got a motion to move, second by Ms. Acevedo. All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. We adjourn.